Monday, February 23rd, 2015, common council meeting is now in session. Our invitation is by Father Paul Coleman, the Leo and Arlene Huck Director of the Center for Social Concerns at University of Notre Dame. Thank you, sir.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you for the invitation. Let us pray. Almighty God, giver of every good gift, we gather here as public servants and concerned citizens. We ask you to bless this night's meeting and the city of South Bend that its deliberations seek to serve. Guide those who will speak and foster a listening spirit of reverence in all who gather. Deepen the respect for each other that is the hallmark of all effective governing bodies. Foster humility before others' gifts, courage to speak unpopular truths, and patience before slowly unveiling insights. And may those who seek your wisdom be granted it, and those who need it receive it. You live and reign forever and ever. Thank you. Mr. Hordy, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Henry Davis.
Henry's here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Dr. Furley.
Here.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Present.
Vice President, Dean.
Present.
Mr. Furley.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
And President Tim Scott.
Present.
Nine present.
All right, report on subcommittee amendments.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 9th, 2015 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, signed. Tim Scott, David Varner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Before we get started, if we could have cell phones turned to silent or off, please, thank you. Nothing on our special business. Report from the city offices, I see Catherine Roos is here. There will not be a report today from the mayor. He did that with the financial report last meeting, two weeks ago. With that, can I have a motion to resolve in committee hall?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. White, you're going to stay?
Thank you. I've asked the council president to remain in my seat since we only have one bill that is before us at this particular time. The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the council meeting where the common council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public meeting this afternoon on the bill. The chairperson announces the committee's advisory recommendation. At this time, I would like to ask city clerk John Forty to give a second reading to Bill 05-15.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 12 addressing residential composting regulations.
I would like to entertain a motion to hear the substitute version, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor of the motion, my hearing vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would like to receive a report, a committee report regarding substitute Bill 05-15. I believe it was the Public Safety and Health Committee.
Also residential maintenance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yet today, we discussed that as being sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
At this time, we have the petitioner before us. We do ask that you state your name and your address and to give us a summary of substitute Bill 05-15.
Thank you, Chairwoman White. Valerie Shea, 1314 East Wayne Street, North South Bend, 46615. I bring to you substitute Bill 515. My co-sponsor on this bill is Councilman Oliver Davis. The bill was designed to provide some guidelines for, I'm sorry, the bill was designed to provide some guidelines for our residents to follow who wish to partake in residential composting. Composting, when done properly, is a tool that can benefit the soil and reduce the amount of yard waste that is sent to our landfills each year. However, when done incorrectly, composting can become a neighborhood nuisance. The guidelines that we are providing are not overly burdensome to follow or enforce and will help code enforcement address the resident-driven complaints that they have received in situations with poorly managed and maintained compost piles. The goal of the ordinance is to encourage and support those who wish to compost while ensuring that all composting is conducted, all composting that is conducted in residential neighborhoods be free from rodents, pest harborage, and odors. In summary, the ordinance, summary of the ordinance would be as follows. All residential composting must be done in a covered or uncovered container. The structure must be adequately maintained, and if it is made of wood, it must be free of rot. The pile method for composting will not be permitted. A compost area must be at least five feet from the lot line and at least 20 feet from your neighbor's house. Only organic vegetative waste is permitted. Residents will not be permitted to compost meat, bones, oil, fish, dairy products, greasy kitchen waste, plastics, synthetic fibers, cat litter, treated or painted woods, diseased plants, or human or pet excrement. Compost materials must be properly maintained. This means compost must be layered, aerated, moistened, and turned to promote effective The penalties for noncompliance will be $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and no less than $250 for the third offense. I welcome any questions.
Prior to asking councilmembers if they have any questions, we'd like to ask the co-sponsor of councilmember Oliver Davis if he would like to add any comments.
I'm very pleased to sponsor this with Councilwoman Shea, and I think this really adds to our whole environmental protection kind of work that we're helping our city to be greener and to just add that whole holistic approach into taking care of our yard waste.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No.
We will now move to the public hearing portion. I'm sorry, councilmember Henry Davis, any questions that you might have for the petitioner?
Yeah, sure, just really quick. Valerie, thank you again. I think this is a wonderful idea along with Mr. Davis, Oliver, Councilmember Oliver. My question is, is that given, who is supposed to enforce this particular piece of legislation?
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance will be enforced by code enforcement, and it will be complaint-driven. So in some of the situations that have come up where residents have called code enforcement to complain about a compost pile that their neighbor is maintaining, we up to now have not had any laws on the books to help code enforcement go and address the situation. So it will be complaint-driven.
Okay. Okay. I guess my next conversation will be later on in council meeting when we can discuss how this department is working towards.
No problem. Are there any questions that councilmembers may have of petitioner? If not, we move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of substitute Bill 05-15? Anyone wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. We move to the council portion. I would start with councilmember Henry Davis. Any comments that you would like to make regarding substitute Bill 05-15?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Shea?
I simply ask for council's support. I think this is a reasonable and very practical ordinance that will enhance quality of life in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilman Furley?
I agree with Valerie. It's complaint-driven, and I think it will be very effective.
Councilmember Dr. Furley, a mayor, Varner, please.
Thank you. So long as it's addressed in the manner in which it's proposed, where it is complaint-driven, I think some of the written descriptions on how you must maintain a compost pile are perhaps more extraordinary than they need to be. If the real issue here is odors and planks because of problems with that side, that's fine. I think that's a wonderful thing to do, and we owe that to our citizens. I'll support it at this point in time, but I would, if it turns into something more than simply complaint-driven, I would be more than willing to revisit it to clarify that later. Thank you.
President Tim Scott?
Yes, I would just like to thank the petitioner answering my questions earlier about the five-acre lots and larger and how the city's going to manage those, and I appreciate that and take that into consideration. So thank you. You got my support.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver Davis?
Thank you for your support, and I hear Dr. Varner's concerns, and I will look into those matters if those matters arise and will support you in working on those matters.
Vice President, your dear?
I'll move for a favorable recommendation.
At this point, that you cannot do that, thank you so much. Councilmember, at this point, I would like to entertain a motion.
Now I'm making that motion. Chairperson White, your favorable recommendation of substitute?
I have to, Bill. A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, my hearing vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Substitute Bill 05-15 would be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would like to ask for motion to rise and report to the common council. Although the motion has been made and it's been seconded, all those in favor of the motion, my hearing vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Full common council is back in session. Mr. Hordy, would you read 0515?
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 12 addressing residential composting regulation.
Motion to hear the substitute version?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Go ahead, someone.
Oh, motion, motion for passage. Second.
Oh, and, Dr. John?
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dean.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
It would be nine aye.
Thank you. Now move to the resolution portion of the council meeting. Resolution announcements. This portion of the council meeting is where common council hears bills filed as proposed in resolution. The titles of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation, is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning and special exception, a report from building department will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who is giving a formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from the city's community investment department will be given, followed by the petitioner giving a formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposed resolutions, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, councilmembers may ask preliminary questions only, with all other council comments being heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name, address, and comments of the bill. If you have questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes with speaking in favor going first, following the opposition with five minutes in the rebuttal period by the presenter of the bill. With that, I ask for a committee report?
Yes, if you want.
Oh, the bill.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10346-15 in accordance with Section 11 thereof and other matters connected therewith in the appealing ordinance is inconsistent.
Ah, wrong one. Sorry about that.
It's contagious.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, opposing Senate Bill 198 and House Bill 1019, which would repeal the common construction wage law.
I move that we hear the substitute version of Bill 15-11.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The personnel and finance committee held a committee meeting, a public hearing, on substitute Bill 15-11, and we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, presenter?
Thank you, council president and council colleagues. The resolution to the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, opposing State Senate Bill 198 and House Bill 1019. Whereas the state of Indiana Common Construction Wage Statute was first enacted in 1935, it is commonly referred to as a prevailing wage law and governs wages, rates, paid to construction workers on Indiana public works projects. Whereas, wage rates are adopted by common construction wage committees in each project county in public hearings where a public works project is estimated to exceed $350,000 in construction costs, which would be paid for by state or local funds and would be owned or leased with an option to purchase by the state or political subdivision. And whereas, currently, Senate Bill 198, sponsored by State Senator Carlin Yoder, and House Bill 1019, sponsored by State Representative Jerry Torre, are pending in Indiana General Assembly with both bills proposed to repeal Indiana's common construction wage law with an effective date of July 1st, 2015. And whereas, Senate Bill 198 was one of 589 bills filed and was referred to committee on pension and labor on January 6th, 2015, and it remains. Whereas, House Bill 1019 was one of 669 bills filed, was referred to committee on employment, labor, and pension, and now has eight co-sponsors as of February 16th, 2015. And whereas, November 23rd, 2014 fiscal impact statement on House Bill 1019 reported similar information as the report has reported on Senate Bill 198 and 9th. And whereas, it has been reported that approximately 9.1% of the workforce in the state of Indiana belongs to a union. And whereas, the Indiana Department of Labor website has information dedicated to the common construction wage, where nearly all wage scales adopted from 2005 to the present are available, with the most recent entry for the city of South Bend being made on January 7th, 2015 for project IDOL 20140696, where wage rates were established by the common construction wage committee, who were appointed pursuant to Indiana Code 5167, where many classifications listing the total hourly highest and lowest rates for skilled being $73.07 and $31.66 for semi-skilled being $60.47 and $30.31, and unskilled $52.19 and $16.95. And projects for St. Joseph County in 2011 through 2015 totaling 68. Now therefore, they're resolved by the common council, the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the common council recognized that for the past 80 years, Indiana construction wage codified at Indiana Code 51671 has promoted efficiency, quality, and safety by providing for a stable, well-trained labor force on public projects, public works projects throughout the state. Section 2, the two bills currently pending in Indiana General Assembly will repeal this state law, which will result in a loss of higher wages and fringe benefits for both union and non-union workers, and may undermine proper training for public construction workers similar to the 1930s when workers from outside the state of Indiana undercut Indiana contractors with less skilled, lower-paid workforces. Section 3, the sponsors of the two pending bills have yet to address any of the potential negative results if neither of these bills are passed, such as how it would impact. Bullet point 1, safety of the workers and the public. Bullet point 2, diversity of the workforce. Bullet point 3, training and apprenticeship programs. Bullet point 4, wages, healthcare, and pension benefits. Section 4, upon adoption of this resolution, the city clerk shall send copies of this resolution to all elected state officials representing the city of South Bend, requesting them to vote no on these City Bill 198 and House Bill 1019. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor. This type of legislation makes it easier to cut wages, lay off workers, outsource jobs. This type of legislation opens the door for declining wages, which undoubtedly furthers crippled or already challenged local economy. This type of unfair and anti-worker legislation will have this desperate impact on the middle class and lower-wage earners. If we do not remember this, we still have this 30% poverty rate. If we do not remember, we still have 74% of our kids, or probably more at this point on free reduced lunch. If we do not remember, with the chronically unemployed, I'm sure our unemployment rate is over 10%. It is imperative that we react and that we stand fast with the folks from our labor community and the folks who oppose this downstate in ensuring that we can make sure that we want more and not less. Mr. Jim Gardner from the labor union here locally, he's going to have a conversation with you as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to speak on today is-
Sir, could you give your name and address?
Yes. James Gardner, president of St. Joe Valley Building Trade, address 1001 North Michigan Street, Lakeville, Indiana. When I speak today in front of the council, I speak for all the entire construction industry, as well as the workers, whether they are represented by a union or not. The current legislation, the way the bill is being drafted and being presented downstate, will impact every single construction worker that performs work on any public works project out there, and in turn will diminish the private sector as well. The impact of this bill would diminish apprenticeship programs across the state that are even tied in with Ivy Tech. Currently, we are at the threshold of over 10,000 associate degrees through the building trades and the cooperation of Ivy Tech. The aspect of allowing the out-of-state contractors to come in, the reason this was put in place was to protect the local employers and local employees, to keep various industries from coming to this state and offering a job in the construction industry and paying them less. For instance, you know, potentially undocumented workers, people, individuals that are already at a poverty level that have to travel from their state to feed their families coming to our state. In turn, they will be bringing that in this direction. In addition to that, is any individual that comes through our apprenticeship program, they don't have a student loan to pay back. They are physically working on the projects, making a living wage, moving forward to a degree as a journeyman that is a certificate from the United States Department of Labor. This will impact the community across the board. In the short term, it'll start out in the construction industry; in the long term, it'll trickle down to manufacturing. It'll trickle down to food service workers. This bill unfortunately is detrimental to the actual economics of St. Joseph County and the city of South Bend.
You have my presentation, sir. Okay, thank you. Any councilmembers have any questions for the president?
But we'll have one from Mr. Gardner. Yes, sir. Because we are on the borderline with Indiana and Michigan, do you see more support coming from the borderline areas like those down south like Kentucky, you have to deal with the Kentucky crowd, Ohio crowds in Cincinnati and all that? Are you seeing that kind of thing? And what are your thoughts?
We do see contractors come down from our bordering counties, you know, up in Michigan. Our concern is with contractors traveling from farther out of states such as Texas, Iowa, the east coast, the west coast. If they want the project and they can bring the workforce in to do the project, have these lower wages, and know that they could come in here and potentially take the projects from local workers, they'll do it. They will go, they will come where the work is.
So this is wider than our just local states that we are looking at. It's more of a broader, national, possibly international, come in here and do things.
It could be a gamut of many things, Mr. Davis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Hordy? Belli? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll now turn it over to the public portion. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 11, 151? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have five minutes. Mr. Dean, we'll time you.
Tony Flora, 202 East Angeles, South Bend, Indiana. I just came back from Indianapolis this afternoon, where 1019 actually was passed by the House of Representatives. And I think what's so extraordinary is that we have legislators whose essential view is this, a major problem in Indiana is that wages are too high, and that they are going to take action to lower wages. The essential feature to the common construction wage law, which is simply a duplicate of what has existed at the federal level since 1930, which is the Davis-Bacon Act, has always meant to regulate wages within a community so that the wage that obtains in that community is maintained. And what we've been talking here tonight about out-of-state contractors and this and that, there's nothing that prevents an out-of-state contractor from bidding on public works jobs in this area as long as they're willing to pay a wage that obtains in this area so we can maintain our community standards. To think that legislators are now arguing that hundreds of millions of dollars are being paid to people in Indiana as construction worker wages is too much, just flies in the face of reality. In addition, this law has existed for 80 years. Why do we need to have total repeal in 2015? No argument is given other than somebody thinks that they have the power to do it. So I am proud of our South Bend Common Council for taking up an issue like this. I urge them to support this resolution, calling upon the state of Indiana not to go ahead and repeal the common construction wage. We've already have seen the House of Representatives take that action. The next step is the Senate. So I hope our community stands up and says that wages are not the problem in our community. We need to raise the standard of living here, not to lower it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against 1511? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for adoption.
Second.
Any comment, please?
I'd like to thank Mr. Val-
We'll start with Karen White and work our way down.
We'd like to thank councilmember Henry Davis and others for bringing this resolution before the city council and for the council hopefully will give you full support and to send a message that this council and this community is very much concerned and that we don't want to move back. I think that items that you have listed, especially in Section 3 of the resolution, are facts, and hopefully that when it goes to the Senate, our resolution will be received and will also be heard and felt and behind us 100%.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this resolution. Thank you to folks who came out to support it, as well as folks who came to the committee today.
Mr. Dean? Negative. Mr. Davis?
I'd like to again thank Councilman Davis for bringing this resolution. And again, if something is working for 80 years, it's nice to help it to continue to work and not throw it and sabotage it unless you have a good, sound reason, and a good, sound reason has not been given. So we thank you and looking forward to supporting you.
Thank you. Dr. Varner?
Thank you. With all due respect to the folks who have brought this proposal forward, at least locally, I guess I'd like to offer a little different thought on it. In particular, with regards to our proposed, and Mr. Gardner's still here, we spoke this afternoon- this afternoon, South Bend is about to embark on a, somewhere between 600 and 800, $900 million CSO project by the time it's done. And while fair wages are always important and everybody wants to see that, the circumstance that exists pretty much leaves the city out of the discussion with regards to the setting of wages. I know there's a committee that exists. At some point in time, someone from downstate makes a determination that this is in fact a wage in this area. And I find myself looking at the long-term cost of an $800 million project and one of the downsides I see is if wages continue to spiral, you're going to see more automation and you'll probably see less jobs. One of the upsides of this repeal is that it doesn't set an upper limit on the wage. Perhaps local labor will negotiate for higher rates rather than lower rates. The assumption is always that it's going to be worse, just because it's a change. I think that this can turn into a win-win. I think there'll be certain circumstances where the wages will be better, and I think there may be certain circumstances when the wages may not be what they are today. But just because something's been around for eight years doesn't make it the best thing. For as long as I've been on the council, there have been discussions of the cost of doing business, and prevailing wage has been a discussion oftentimes. Again, without any, not meant to be disrespectful to the folks who are in support of this, but I think when a legislature takes a look at something regardless of the circumstance, if they see what appears to be a niche and they act on it, regardless of who's in charge, we find ourselves living by it and living with it. So I hope this is one of those deals that turns out to the best for everybody, and I think it probably will. Thank you.
Dr. Perlich?
On ballots, I think the common construction wage law is a good law. The things I like about it are two. One, that it rewards the skilled or the semi-skilled or the unskilled, so they categorize your level of expertise. Secondly, the wages are decided by five committee people. Those five committee people come from all branches, both union, non-union. So I'm very much in favor of it as far as common construction wage law, and I support the resolution tonight.
Councilperson Shay?
Councilman Davis, Henry Davis, thank you for bringing this bill before council, and you have my full support.
Thank you so much. President Scott? Yes, sir. I just had a couple of comments. I wanted to, first of all, thank Kathy for her endless support and research and making sure these things come to light and that we have practical information, factual information that we can bring to the council floor. I also wanted to, you know, state that this is not a R versus D situation. This issue is about the quality of life of all citizens, obviously in fact the people in the city of South Bend. This is not about political affiliation. I have not seen or lived in a Democratic neighborhood, I have not seen or lived in a Republican neighborhood, but I've seen and I've lived in a poor neighborhood, and I've seen and I've been around a rich neighborhood. So if we continue to allow our quality of life to be stripped away by someone who wants to make more profit each and every year while they watch us pinch pities and try to figure out how we get a different revenue stream, we're all going to probably be in trouble here soon. So I think the legacy of how we fulfill our family's legacy is making sure that we continue to fight for what's best and making sure that wages are matched with the quality of skill that's out there.
Vote for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Vrona?
Mrs. Shay?
Hi.
Dr. Perlich?
Hi.
Dr. Vrona?
Nay.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Perlich?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Scott?
Aye.
The vote is eight to one. Thank you. Mr. Vrona, first readings. Did you read 0815?
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10346-15 in accordance with section 11 thereof and other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Motion to send 815 to community investment? Got it. For second and third reading on March 29th.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. That will move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis?
President Scott, thank you so much. You know, I had wanted to speak about this when the first, when we were discussing Deal 0515. I just have a very, I have a concern. Code enforcement, I'm interested in finding out how that's working out. Management, I'm really am concerned about the amount of graffiti I continue to see, the sidewalks that have, you know, endless amounts of snow. I'm watching people walk down the street on Lincoln Way and actually also Western Avenue, Main Street as well, very busy corridors. I'm not blaming the business owners for not shoving the snow. I'm not blaming the trucks that are plowing the snow as to the reason why all the snow is on the sidewalks. But what I am interested in finding out is how are these codes being enforced? How are we working through these things to make sure the quality of life in here in South Bend is at a standard that we all can be satisfied with? And I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing any enforcing when we're talking about lawn parking. I'm seeing all kinds of things that don't look like we're enforcing any sorts of codes. My question is, is that does code enforcement have enough revenue to do their job? Does code enforcement have enough employees to do their job? And what is the plan to make sure that they are doing their job? Again, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not blaming anyone for anything, but in fact, I need to know, and we owe it to the constituency base, our residents, taxpayers, an answer on what is happening, because these things are not looking good, they look pretty bad. Again, I can say I keep seeing people walking down. It's even in school zones, the other thing that may self my alarm, school zones are covered in all of this snow and debris. How do our kids get to school and cross the street properly or stay in the street to get into school doors? So how can we have this conversation?
I would suggest that you get with health and public safety, and we meet with code enforcement and the city administration. I would ask that all council members send the questions they have, and then we could, if permitted by you, President Scott, at the next meeting of report of city offices, have code, answer all those questions, and be ready to answer questions that council members would have. So you'll gather the questions and we'll go from there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything else on unfinished business? Seeing none, anything on new business? Seeing none. We will move to privilege of the floor. This is the portion of the council meeting where anybody can come up and speak on behalf of or on any topic that was not on agenda tonight. You will have three minutes. You need to state your name and address for the record, and first come, first served. If you have any questions or concerns that you want the council to address or look into, there is a form up on the bench. You can fill that out and hand it to the clerk, and he can move it on to us.
Thank you. My name is David Wells, 701 West Sample, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I would first like to ask the council for an additional three minutes so I can complete my statement.
Second.
Question, do you have a question on this?
Yes, sir.
Well, those who may speak in any kind of opposition to this statement, will we get that at the same time?
It's privilege of floors, those who speaking on whatever, case by case basis.
So they might ask for the same allotment of time if that's what they want, so he's asked for an extra three, so then we give him a three, somebody comes to ask for a three.
We vote on it the same way.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have additional. And President, or Vice President Derek Dieter, would you please take a moment to watch? You're going to have to-
So we have the total, six minutes.
Dr. Vrona?
I can do it.
Kevin, I'm doing it. Okay, Fred, I mean Gavin.
We actually have digital phones now, not wristwatches like this.
Gavin will time it, we'll wait till these are ready.
You can start.
Thank you for your time you've given me tonight, Mr. President, and for your council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Wells, and for the last three years, I and others have been embattled in litigation that has not only affected my personal life but my professional career. During this time, I have become a lone city employee still fighting this ongoing relentless effort by this body to listen to private conversations that were illegally recorded, which violated our civil liberties and constitutional rights. These actions were ruled in a federal court to be completely illegal. It is important to note here for all to understand that we as plaintiffs have taken great steps in trying to alleviate much of the financial burden and continued embarrassment this situation has generated in our community. It has damaged not only our reputation as a community but our potential for greater economic development. As plaintiffs, we have dismissed many lawsuits that pertain to the tapes controversy in order to end this damaging issue. For example, we have dismissed you, the South Bend Common Council, Captain Darrell Boykins, former communication director Karen DePape, and her attorney, Scott Durey. We have settled our litigation with the city, all in an effort to try and stop this ongoing drama, which can have no winners. Still, this body of elected officials continues to pursue this matter to apparently no financial end. Even after the much anticipated and very expensive August 2014 trial, you continue to issue subpoenas. The continued efforts to now hear recordings from a hard drive that has 11 months of stored conversations from potentially hundreds of citizens and police officers is nothing more than a witch hunt of financial irresponsibility to simply satisfy mere curiosity. The amount of taxpayer dollars spent on such a task can never be justified by this body, given the dollars spent today. You should know that I am a South Bend native and second-generation police officer here. I have served this community for more than 20 years with distinction. Neither I nor Tim Corbett, Steve Richmond, or Brian Young have ever been reprimanded for any conduct unbecoming a police officer or that is contrary to the police department's duty manual. We have all received numerous letters of commendation and awards and have risked our lives for the people of this community more than we care to count. In fact, as former SWAT officers, I, Tim Corbett, and Brian Young have served shoulder to shoulder with the council's own vice president on the most dangerous police operations and high-risk drug warrants. I and Tim Corbett continue to work with a team of dedicated police officers who solve murders and violent crimes in this community at an exceptionally high success rate. As commander of the special victims unit, Brian Young works the most heinous crimes ever committed against women and children. And finally, as assistant warden of the sheriff's department, Steve Richmond has a dangerous job of maintaining inmates who have been accused and convicted of many of those terrible crimes. We are dedicated public servants for the people of this community for which we care deeply for. These continued efforts by this body to hear what someone may or may not have said about someone else are exhausting for everyone. Having approached the Department of Justice ourselves and having asked the FBI for an investigation ourselves into the illegal wiretapping practices at the police department, we are convinced that had any of the allegations against us of illegal activity and racist comments been true, we would have seen this investigation conducted by the FBI take a completely different turn. In fact, the release document that Captain Boykins signed in order to receive his settlement states, and I quote, "The parties, city of South Bend, Boykins and police officers, agree that neither of the parties is aware of any evidence of illegal activity by the wiretap plaintiffs or any evidence that reveals that the wiretap plaintiffs used any racist words against Boykins," end quote. I find myself in the unique position of being the sole city employee left in this ongoing battle with you. An atmosphere of hostility continues for me every day this matter remains unresolved. Former division chief Richmond and former detective bureau captain Brian Young have retired, both incredible police officers and dedicated to serving the people of South Bend. Their loss as city employees is tragic, as is the loss of our first African-American police chief. None of this should have happened. The wounds for all of us and our families are real and cannot begin to heal until this is resolved. I am asking this body to stop pursuing efforts that continue to prolong this drama with no apparent end in sight. The politics and personal agendas of some both elected and in the private sector are damaging for all the people of South Bend and its reputation as a whole. We will not stop fighting. As long as this prolonged effort to continue this litigation and waste more and more taxpayer dollars is pursued by this elected body, we will resist. We arrive to work every day sworn to uphold and protect the rights of all citizens, and we swear to protect those very same rights that inherently belong to us as well.
Sir, you have one minute?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
I'll make this real short and sweet. Jessica Skilbott, 10205 South Bend, Indiana, 466C O. Kind of a couple of comments and rebuttal to what the officer just said. It's not, it is not just the council who's seeking this. Many citizens who pay taxes, who pay for this council, have said, "We want to hear that." One tape, if it's only one, we want to hear that one. These gentlemen said to the news media at the beginning of this, "There's nothing on those tapes. It's not what you think it is." Well then, why are they fighting so hard for those tapes not to be heard? The city's not going to rest until this is resolved and the tapes are in fact played. Period. I have a privilege of the floor also. I would like the council to please look into the situation with the cap'n Ruth's patio in her backyard. We had a special prosecutor who was assigned to this a year and two months ago, and I believe in the media report, if you read it, he said that he was going to review this Indiana State Police investigation and get back with an update within a week or two's time. It's been almost two months, been totally silent. It's almost like the police tape issue. So if you would, please see if you can do a follow-up on this as well.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Reverend Greg Bryan, 1238 Dime. It was listed in Newsweek that we are dying city. We're not a dying city, we're a lying city. It's not a black thing or a white thing, it's a right thing. Our community has been damaged, the community has been broke down from unity, integrity because of the tape situation. We hear it in our churches, we hear it in our grocery stores, and for it to come to a fight, they didn't receive our money value of whatever money that they got, now you want it to stop. We should have stopped it before we gave out our money. And if we can't wake them up, we're going to shake them off.
Okay, thank you. Next.
My name is Mario Sims, I'm senior pastor of Dulles Chapel, 608 St. Joseph Street. I'm here in my capacity as a spokesperson for People United for Better Government, but also for a group of pastors that have come together because of this issue. And if I can ask the council for six minutes, I probably won't leave at this time.
So moved. All in favor?
A lot of the pastors who I represent are here tonight, not all of them, but some of them. The reason I say that is, this is not about one person waking up and having a personal agenda against several officers, that's just simply not reality. I had an opportunity to listen to Lieutenant Wells, I respect Lieutenant Wells a great deal, I respect his service, I respect Tim Corbett's service to this community. I have always supported law enforcement in this community, I believe that they are our frontline. I thank God for those men, I thank God for their service. But facts are facts, and what was said tonight was not the truth. The reality is, I have an article here from Fox News, "South Bend to Pay Karen DePape $235,000 in the Settlement." Now, here's the problem with that. Of the money that's been paid out, Karen DePape received the most money of all of the defendants. Now, a curious person may ask, why, if Karen DePape lied, would you pay her the most money? Interestingly enough, if you look at her notice of tort claim, which was prepared by a licensed attorney, Scott Durey, page two, the circumstance which brought about the loss, paragraph three says, "Acting entirely within the scope of her duties as communications director, Ms. DePape discovered a ranking police officer with the South Bend Police Department as well as others within the police department were engaged in serious acts of misconduct. The acts of misconduct range from potential commission of criminal offenses to serious breaches of city policies and procedures. The content of some of these conversations contain racially derogatory statements relating to other ranking officers." Now, see, that's what the media likes to report, that this racial issue, we're not really that concerned about that. What we're really concerned about is the rest of this. None of these discussions had anything to do with legitimate law enforcement, and yet they were done during the hours that individuals were being paid to perform duties for the city. See, here's a problem. Even though Chief Boykin- Even though Chief Boykins signed his settlement saying it was not about racial issues, no one has signed anything that said that it wasn't about the potential commission of criminal offenses, serious breaches of city policies and procedures. Okay, Mrs. DePaige got paid $235,000, more than all the other defendants or the parties. Mrs. DePaige's settlement does not retract these statements. The United States Supreme Court says, "You cannot disclose what has already been disclosed." She's already disclosed what's on the tapes. The reason I can stand here and say this now, not worrying about a libel or defamation suit, is because it's already part of the public record. The mayor, in his infinite wisdom, has already paid her the most money, which tells you what? There was no discovery done. Any attorney knows that if you proceed to a settlement, the first thing you do is you have discovery, you say, "Hey, before I open my checkbook, I want to listen to the tapes." The amazing thing is, even though the federal judge, who was not the district attorney, who said back in 2012 that the FBI conducted the investigation and it didn't warrant any type of prosecution of Mrs. DePaige or Chief Boykins, but the judge, who's on the judiciary, doesn't do investigations, determined it was illegal, but guess what? The chief and Mrs. DePaige have not been prosecuted. Why? Because any defense attorney will tell you that if you prosecute them, their attorneys have to listen to the tapes to defend them. This is a shell game, folks. You need to separate the truth from whatever else you want to call it, okay? Because what's being said here is a shell game. Why would these officers sue Councilman Davis for defaming them and then stand here and say, "Seal the tapes," when the truth of the matter is the only defense to defamation and slander? You know, I was born on a day, but it wasn't today. This is insane, for them to come up here after they got paid close to $500,000, when this has never been retracted, and we still don't know, after paying all those $1 million, if we have officers who are plotting murders, or maybe possibly covering up crimes?
Sir, you have one minute?
Karen DePaige said criminal offenses, ranking police officers. They want to seal the tapes when they sue the Second District Councilman for slander? How's he going to prove that he didn't slander them if they destroy the tapes? But yet, but yet, they say they want to close, but they sue Second District Councilman Henry Davis. That's how bad they want to close, right?
Thank you. Next?
My name is Sandra Bryan, we're beginning an organization called Citizens United for Better Government. I'm asking the council for the six minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Go ahead.
Well, you know, I tend to agree with Mr. Wells on one thing. This game should have been stopped a long time ago. But there's only two people, the way I understand it, that have heard the tapes, Watkins and Mr. DePaige. I'm going back to what Mr. DePaige said. Everybody else don't really matter, because anybody heard the tapes? Let's go back to what Mr. DePaige said. In the beginning, she said, "If those tapes are played, it's going to change the face that we see." Is I'm lying? She said, "It will change the face of South Bend." So now, I don't care if those tapes are heard, if you use our money against us, the citizens, our tax money, if we was coming out of Bear Bank account, this wouldn't went this long. Everybody would have just been saying, "No, I'm done." But now, you've used our money up, you've got fat out of us, now you say, "Let's stop, let's stop." We won't be, no, it won't be no peace, the justice is done. We, the citizens of South Bend, have the right, for the money that we have paid these people, to hear it all. We're not going to let nobody, council or anybody, we're going to fight, like you said. We're not giving up, and we're not giving up.
That's right.
We're going all the way. So it's too late. I don't care what judge, whatever everybody says, there won't be no peace in our army in this community until the tapes, or recording, as they call it, is over. So we better try another angle, because this one here is not working. You want our army, you want the community back together and supporting our police officers? We got good police officers. Citizens United didn't want a retirement for his outstanding work, and we had been using a good officer, he would have got that award. I came here, and my woman did you present that award to a police officer that we've done it to do a police officer. So we don't hate the police, but we've got to have the truth. We owe the public that. And I believe if it comes out, it's going to change the election. I believe that. But it will come out, because we got too many star tactics. It'll go on and on and on, as long as they can use our money against the citizens. Let's bring this to a head. Mr. Wells wanted to stop, Citizens United wanted to stop, everybody in this room wanted to stop. Okay, let's do it. Let's play the tapes. You see this here? You see the back of it? Where are you hiding? If you ain't hiding, man, let's blame the dog on things. But ain't nobody talking like that, though. They said, "Let's take them out and burn them, destroy them," but we sure ain't did our duty. Nobody, the fight has been too hard. I watched Selma, and they marched, they didn't want to stop the fight, and we don't want to stop the fight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next?
Oh, counsel, I'm Dan Mullis, 632 South 28th Street, occupation, camp. I just want to say, basically, one word on the situation, accountability. Accountability in all the departments, all the way up to the mayor, accountability. I was with my son Saturday night, we're watching the show, and talking about Rockefeller, Carnegie, J.K. Morgan. My son said, "That, that had concern." I was, "Great, son, it does." Because we lack accountability in our departments, we lack accountability in our highest department, and our mayor is very hard to speak with, unless you're somebody important. So the good thing is, and I told my son this, that there are good people in government, there are good people on those departments. It's just, you have to stand up and make a voice for yourself to weed the bad ones If an issue happens, a department should be open and honest with the public, and talk with the public, not go behind closed doors and not invite them anywhere and leave the public or set the particular family in the dark. You know, it's sad, but I really see in the future, some election time, be changing. Thank you very much, counsel.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next?
Rebecca Kaiser, 913 Diamond, South Bend, Indiana. And may I have six minutes if I needed?
All in favor? Aye. All in favor? Go ahead.
What I'd like to say is, as administrator for a very large social network page called South Bend Neighborhoods Problems and Solutions, I think while many people are curious about the tapes, most of us are tired of the whole situation. For three years, the tapes have been used to divide this community, and it's been used by politicians and groups. The money and time spent on screaming and yelling about these tapes that could have been used to help racial relations, instead of people screaming racism and this and that and the other thing, is abhorrent. We've spent a lot of money, and we've caused more problems than we sell, because instead of having conversations that were decent and normal and civil, we screamed and we yelled about lying and the tapes. Okay, let me ask a question. If there's racism on the tapes and we hear them, is that going to sound anything that we heard them? What is it going to sound? It's going to prove that somebody said something racist. And how many of us hear that every day? And how many of us don't stand up and say, "That's a lie"? We have gotten to the point in three years that we have divided this community about tapes, when I think a lot of us knew, I knew months before it hit the fan, because of a source, and I was told that many of them were illegal. And yet, people are still talking about, "Release the tapes." I don't need to hear anybody say anything ugly. We hear that every day in our streets. We've heard it for three years, from politicians and different groups. What we need to start doing in this community is start working together. To hell with the tapes. Three years of this kind of mess in this community, and we have not worked one hour of all that time and money that we could have spent bringing ourselves together and solving the problem, instead of all these people yelling and screaming about it. And that's what I have to say about the tapes.
Okay, thank you. Next?
My name's Tim Corbett, 523 Sheriff's Street, I'd like to have six minutes.
All in favor? I've heard some of the speeches here tonight about the tapes and the legality and illegality of it. People are focusing on one tape or going back 11 months. I haven't heard any arguments about the seven tapes. Sir, would you speak to the council? That were inadmissible, that the federal government said that you can't listen, that were illegal, and under state law 35-5-5-5, in fact, it's a Class C felony to have taped recorded and/or listened to those conversations. I didn't hear Pastor Sims say anything about that. I'd like to know where all these facts are coming from, when the only person that has ever heard a tape, that has ever heard a tape that we know of, is Karen DePaige, but yet I hear Daryl Boykins. Daryl Boykins has said in his own statements that he did not hear the tape. That's wrong, improper, or a lie, however you want to cut it, I don't personally care. I'm not rolling over, I'm not going to take it. There's three ways in Indiana that you can listen to a tape. In Indiana, it's a one-party rule, so anybody can take anybody at any time without them knowing it, that's legal. Number two is if I tell everybody in my business that every tape or every phone in here is legally recorded, do you understand and you sign a form knowing that every phone in here is recorded? The other way is with a federal warrant. That's good for 30 days, where I have to come in, apply for a warrant accusing somebody of doing something that I think they did, and at the end of that 30 days, I have to go back and reapply for it. If the judge or anytime during those conversations, I hear a conversation over and above anything other than what I'm going for, like drugs, guns, any of that kind of stuff, I have to cut it off. So these facts that are supposedly being said out here, they're not facts, they're fallacies. It has not been proved. Nothing has been proved. We're not going to go away, we're going to fight, you can snicker, you can giggle, you can fumble around with your research devices and all that kind of stuff, have all your little sneaky games you want, it doesn't frighten anybody. I put people in prison, I put people in prison that have given speeches. Do I think that they have a little bit of a problem with me? Absolutely. Every day, I deal with baby killers, people that are killing people in this community. 90% of our homicides last year were black-on-black crimes. It's not a carload of whites going around shooting black people, it's not a carload of blacks going around shooting white people, it's one-on-one, and we fight every day to try and stop that. And all this does is stir up the pot. We get contacted by the community, I get stopped every day on the way into the county city building, what a great job we do, appreciate what you're doing, thank you for doing what you're doing, we wouldn't want your job, don't listen to the trash that's being put out on the street. So if you think Tim Corbett's going to roll over and take it, ain't happening. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My name's Jason Benicki-Critslo, I live at 3822 West Ford Street, South Bend, Indiana 46619. Basically, what I have to say about the tapes comes down to one simple word, and it's rights. You know, we all are used to a post-9/11 world where we used to be recorded, and we think it's okay for people to eavesdrop on our conversations. But these gentlemen have rights, and the rights to not be recorded unknowingly, and once their rights were violated, we don't have a right as curious citizens to hear what they saw on those tapes. And all I ask is that we respect their rights to have their private conversations remain private. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Joseph Tillman, Progressive Bourbon Industries, 914 Lincoln Way West. The organization I represent, Progressive Bourbon Industries, has generally taken a backseat concerning me.
Little while we're speaking.
I'm sorry, your microphone's apparently is not working when I talk. Hey, can I get like an hour? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
He's taking this.
Anyway, this is what I have to say, you know, we have this thing going on in South Bend where people just want to let begones be begones. See, when the affirmative action orders was ignored for 23 years, the first thing out their administrative mouth, "Let begones be begones." When we found out that there was supposed to be some contracting opportunity for low and very low income people, "Let's let begones be begones," after they were ignored for 15 years. When redevelopment commission played fast and loose with the way they titled properties to CDCs, once again, when they were called, it was, "Let's let begones be begones." Here we are again, with a bunch of policemen, apparently saying things that are kind of uncanny, and once again, we hear from some people, "Let's let begones be begones." I'm tired of let begones be begones at this point. At some point, people have a right to know who's working on the police force. If there was nothing wrong with what was said on them tapes, I don't really get why everybody's so up in arms about nobody hearing them. I'm clear that we have some bigoted policemen, and I'm clear that we have some outstanding policemen. I'm clear that we have some policemen who live by excessive force, and I'm clear that we have some policemen who operate with professionalism. Perhaps if Chief Tichman would police the Police Department and recognize that it's not the people on the street that are professional trained in diplomacy attack, but the Police Department, maybe they would police themselves, and we can get rid of some of those policemen who are clearly on these tapes saying things that are uncanny. In the absence of that, then we have to say that nobody's really interested in our best interests. And if you're not interested in our best interests, then I question why you say nothing.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Grayland Watson, 2010 South Gertrude. I just rose to say, I heard Mr. Corbett, I heard Mr. Wells, I heard everybody else, but I want to say to the council, I want to say to the Police Department, and I want to say to us that's here, I want you all to know, God is watching. God knows everything. And the scripture says, "Everyone practicing evil hates the light and does not come to the light; but everyone that's practicing true comes to the light, that he will show that his deeds have been done in righteousness." John tells us that we should know the truth, and the truth should make us free. So I come here to represent Jesus Christ, my Savior. And no matter what nobody else say, you can sit here and you can try to intimidate people, and you can use harsh words, but the Bible is true, and it says, "Let every soul come subject to governing authority." So we come subject to the authority. We come subject to Tim Corbett, we come subject to Mayor Bill Bubba, we come subject to this council. But I'm here to tell you today that every one of us going to come subject to God. So whatever you do, remember this, God is watching. So, whatever you do, remember this, God is watching.
Thank you, sir. Believe this is our last? Name and address, please.
Kentay Lart, owner of a barber shop, at 307 Chapin Street. And I request six minutes if I need it from the council.
Subpo, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead, Mr. Lart.
Okay, just want to speak briefly regarding this issue. I'm running for city council right now, and I understand that certain things I say can be detrimental. I kind of feel like this, though, that if I have to compromise who I am and how I feel, that the council won't be for me. I grew up here in South Bend, Indiana, and had a hard life, at the time, a hard life. I hated living, because it was very, very horrible, living in domestic violence situations and coming through. But I made it. When I turned 18, I dedicated my life to working with young people to help them out. I've been a youth passion out for nearly 18 years, over half of my life. I've also worked with some of the hardest cases in our city, through places like the Madison Center for Children, Family and Children's Center, and through the Juvenile Justice Center, with volunteering and doing ministry work. I'm currently in a barber shop, watch a young man come in, many of which don't even know how their father looks. They can't tell me how his height is, and some of them don't even know his name, and it breaks my heart, I'm going to the point of tears, but I have to be strong, fold my flippers, cut their hair, and encourage them that they can grow up and be whatever they want to be, that if I made it, they can make it. So, at the end of the day, regarding this situation, the question I ask regards the future of how our city will look, and how it was standing, because the young people today are the adults tomorrow, and no matter what choice we make, at the end of the day, the underlying question is, as we expect our children to grow up and be upstanding and productive citizens, the question we ask is really, what do we tell our children? At the end of the day, what do we tell our children? And what we tell them? Is it something that they're going to be able to grow off of, or something that's going to throw them back, or keep them marginalized, so that they won't pursue certain professions and do certain things? So, at the end of the day, again, what do we tell our children?
Thank you. That concludes, floor is closed?
Yeah, done. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, whatever.
You're done.
You're done anymore, buddy.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're done.